Zach heard your plea and he has a plan.
Nice.
We're gonna try, we'll see how it goes.
That's what my wife said, that's how they do it if they have to do anything and it works out really well for them.
Okay, well, I was trying to find something, actually, let me let everybody else in before I start talking. I was trying to find, where is my participants, there we go. There's Angelina, alright, I'm letting everybody in. I was trying to find a YouTube video, but none of them I could find had kind of the like speak along kind of thing. So I have a kind of like Kyle called it a karaoke thing, so we're gonna try and make that work, so.
Nice.
Alright, I'm gonna start the meeting and then I guess Angelina can join us.
She should be here, or I need to turn.
Do we have three commissioners though with without her?
Yes, you have a core, there we go, and Angelina.
Like to call to order, oh, sorry, like to call to order at 6:02 PM, March 10, Airway Heights Planning Commissioners Meeting. We'll do a roll call, Commissioner Patel, I'm here, Commissioner Shane Fell, is he here today, Shane?
No, Sean will not be here this evening.
Okay, Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Commissioner Angelina?
Here.
Oh, thank you, I can't see you, but. We're all present, so we can move to the next item, which will be the Page of Alliance.
Cal, did you call Art?
Uh, I, Commissioner Art, I think is resigning.
Well, I've not resigned yet.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I apologize.
He's still here.
Commissioner Art?
I'm here.
I apologize, I thought.
No worries.
I've never done this kind of a thing before, so this is the first time.
It's fine.
We're gonna miss you, by the way.
Well, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Go ahead, run your meeting.
Go ahead, you wanna run the wording for the Page of Alliance?
Um, yeah, let me just second.
This is a new trial, so pay your patience, please, oh. So I'm gonna let Mark start, I guess.
Mark? Alright, so it's gonna read itself, so just read it in highlight and just read along. So I'm gonna go here in like three seconds.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I think this worked pretty good.
Yes.
Even I like it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna pop the bubble, Republican, that sentence should be capitalized, proper noun.
I didn't write it.
Sorry. It's the, it's the old English teacher in me, I can't get away from it.
I will fix it before we see each other.
Uh, we're gonna make some changes on the agenda today, and one of the changes will be to remove Sean's name and Art's name. And Ed Hanks, go ahead.
You, you might wanna give Art some time first because he's still part of the planning commission.
Okay, so should I leave him on, on the blank?
Well, give him, if you could give him some time and then we'll, we'll get to the agenda.
Okay. So I'd like to add, uh, make a change to the agenda for tonight, and want to add the new Commissioner Hank, and also, we're gonna make a, in the action item, we're gonna select the vice chairperson tonight. If anybody wants to give me a motion to make the changes.
I'll make a motion to change, make changes to the agenda for tonight, adding the two items.
And I'll second it.
Well, Heather.
Aye.
Can we move forward with, with Art on the commission and Hank taking his spot at the same time? Or does Art need to rely before we can formally acknowledge Hank?
Yeah, let, let's, um, go ahead and, and adjust this, which is that the Chair could entertain a motion to modify the agenda to recognize an announcement by Art Bub at this time.
I'll make a motion to listen to Commissioner Bub at this time.
Who wants to second it, Angelina?
I'll second it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Art, you have the floor.
Good heavens, we become a little, too much detail tonight, I'm sorry. Anyhow, I guess I have to do this formally, I thought it was done, but it wasn't. So I'm formally submitting my resignation from Planning Commission due to the fact that I got appointed to City Council, which I have to say is a little bittersweet. I'm leaving with an awfully lot of good memories, I've learned a great deal from the two remaining members, Sean and, and Cal, everybody else seems to have gotten off the ship, I'm not sure why, I hope it wasn't me. But I leave with a lot of great memories, I think that we have done a lot of good things more recently than in the far distant past, and Heather knows this, and I'll say it now openly. Before Heather got here, I was wondering what it was we were really doing and what we were struggling with because in my mind, we were not being very productive. However, in the last year plus, beginning with Heather and then with the addition of Zach, I think that we have become a well-oiled, well-running, smooth machine that is really, really refining the work as a planning commission should. And so I thank both, well, Heather and Zach for sure, but, but Cal and, and Mark who are left, you guys have taught me many, many things in many ways that I will now carry with me into my work at City Council. At the same time, I would welcome Angelina, although I can't see her, but that's alright, and Hank, you are joining a very, very fine-running, excellent commission who really wants to do good work for the city of Airway Heights, and I think that you will find, it's, it's gonna be a good experience, it really will be. And I look forward to our joint meetings, as we are scheduling those as well, with City Council and Planning Commission. I think those have been extremely productive and they're well, I think they're acknowledged by both City Council as well as our city planners to be very, very good. Heather, that leads me to, what do I do with this wonderful, thick, unused handbook that I have leaning on my desk?
Well, Art, I've never got one.
You know what, you're not missing anything, but it is formal to pass it on, so you're welcome to mine or whomever. Heather, do you want me to drop it off, where?
Uh, yeah, if you just drop it off at City Hall, then we'll pick it up from there and we'll get it over to Mark. And I think at this point, we'll follow up with some information with Angelina and Hank because I think they've gotten virtual versions of the binder, but we can certainly give them physical copies as well.
Sure, and I look forward to the day when you update it and fit it down a little bit. But I do wanna say, moving forward, I, I think it's gonna be a great marriage between the two commissions and council, and it's gonna be good. And with that, and only three of you will know what this means, but they can fill you in on what this means later, since we're not gonna be meeting in reality, this will make sense to some of you. But I leave you with this, and I wanna thank you again, Heather and Zach, for making Christmas this year really special and giving us our wonderful presents. And I'll let, I'll, I'll leave that alone and let you fill in, Angelina and Hank. And with that, I will say goodnight, goodbye, and we'll see you in the future.
Good luck, Art.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, that was sweet and good. Who wants to do a motion for approval of, I need a motion for the approval of February 10, 2021 meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February meeting.
Want some second?
I can second it.
Do anybody have any discussions or any comments about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we also want to propose a modification to the agenda to acknowledge Hank Beinecker, who has been newly appointed as a Planning Commission representative by the council this last Monday, so he can join in on the meeting tonight.
I would like to make another agenda adjustment for tonight's meeting. We wanna add our new Commissioner Hank. Mark, do you wanna put a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to add an agenda item approving the placements of Hank to Commission C1, correct?
Position one. Second. Angelina?
I, I will second.
You gotta have to second today, okay?
Okay.
Cause once Hank comes aboard, that's fine. All in favor for the changes?
Aye.
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 I did have a minor request, my first name is, it's L E instead of L I.
I apologize.
No, that's okay.
If I was gonna ask you to, how I pronounce your last name properly.
Yeah, it's, it's really pretty easy, just go Camp O Bass like a fish and O.
Okay.
So Campo Basso.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, I think that kind of clarifies all of the action items for the first part of the meeting today, thank you.
Do we have anybody signed up for the public comments?
Um, we do have at least one or two members of the public here tonight. If anyone would like to make a comment that does not pertain to any of the action items, please just type in the chat and I will unmute you.
Nobody, alright, we'll move to the next item, which is presentation, we don't have any tonight. So I think we'll jump into the public hearings, and before we start that, I'd like to just make some comments. All comments by proponents, opponents, or other members of the public shall be made from the podium, in this case will be the Zoom, because an official recording of the public hearing is made. If a person is physically challenged or requires special accommodation, the chair should be advised. No comments will be made from any other locations other than the podium. Any person making out of order comments shall be subject to removal from the meeting, in this case will mute you. There shall be no demonstration, applause, or any audience participation during or at the conclusion of any person's presentations. These rules are intended to promote an orderly system of holding public hearings, giving every person an opportunity to be heard, and to ensure that no individual is annoyed or embarrassed by exercising his or speech, and I have two more things. Also, the Chair may call upon the Development Service Director or Designation to describe the matter under consideration. The Chair calls upon proponents, oh, I did that one already, oh, may call proponents, opponents, or other individuals who wish to speak regarding the matter under consideration. I would like to open the public hearing for downtown plan and proposed commercial zones. Do we have, okay, Heather, can you please?
Absolutely, just as the public hearing unfolds, we have several of them on the agenda, we will start with a presentation or overview by staff, either myself, Heather Trautman, Principal Planner for the city of Airway Heights, or Zach Becker, our Planning Technician for the city on each of these items. And at the conclusion of the staff presentation, I'm available for questions from the commission members, and the Chair will then open up the meeting to public comment and public testimony. Are there any questions at this point from the commission members about the process for each of the public hearings?
No.
No.
I just have a quick question, so, so we don't make our comments, we just make our comments to you later, but not here?
Actually, you, you would engage in the staff as they're presenting with questions about the material, follow-up information, and then I'll conclude, and since this is the first hearing on the commercial zones and downtown plan, I'll hand it back over to Mr. Patel as the Chair. As the Chair will open up the public comment period for tonight, and we will get comments from the public about these items individually for each hearing. And if you want me to answer a question by the public, then the Chair or one of the Plan Commission members can ask me to answer the question for the member of the public. But at the end of the testimony, the Chair will close the testimony, and then the commission will have the opportunity to make a motion to open discussion on the hearing item. And at that point, once there's a motion on the table to discuss the item, then the commission members can debate the hearing item. The goal of each of these hearing items is for a vote of the Plan Commission, and that vote would be to make a recommendation to the City Council, and that recommendation could be, the proposal as presented, it could be a proposal with changes, it could be a recommendation not to move forward with the proposal, and each of the staff reports that you have has a sample motion in it for your consideration. You can certainly make any other motion that you would like to with proposed findings, because we're required to have findings for each of the items that are relative to how consistent these proposals are to our municipal code. And so with, with two new Plan Commission members tonight, that's a summary overview of, of the process for each hearing tonight, but at any point where you may have questions, feel free to ask Zach or I, or direct a question to the Chair, I would be happy to help along the way.
Alright, thank you, Heather.
Absolutely. Well, with that, thank you, I'm going to put a PowerPoint presentation onto the screen. And as you can see, I've got quite a few items on my desktop. Perfect, now, one of the downsides of us being in a Zoom environment is the possibility that we will suffer, struggle through internet connection. So please let me know at any time if my slides lag, because I wanna make sure that you have the images I'm speaking to each of the factors of either the downtown plan or the commercial zones. So give me a thumb or hand, or just let me know if it's lagging and you're not catching these images. And if there's a remote possibility that one of us freezes up, we'll try to reconnect with that individual as well. Fair game?
Fair.
Fair, okay, so this is actually an image from SCJ Alliance, which is our consultant on this project that they found. This is from, I believe, 1952, this is actually what is currently the original portion of Airway Heights. So just a little bit of background, the city of Airway Heights has actually existed since 1955 in which it was incorporated. It began earlier, obviously, from the photo that was on the last screen. But most recently, in the last several years, beginning roughly about 2018, the city has been focusing on identifying a downtown area and doing plan with SCJ Alliance, a planning consulting firm, to identify a downtown area. Now, this project is to help create a shared vision for our downtown, have a practical guide for implementation. It also gives us some strategies, some high priority activities that we would be able to either fund, or ordinance as we'd be able to pass, or action items that we would work on in order to help realize a downtown in Airway Heights. Now, this is also to help us focus on priorities when the community, there are always lots of priorities, and having a downtown in Airway Heights is gelled up through last year's comprehensive planning process is an important piece that we need to work on, identify and work toward building. Now, this isn't the first time that Airway Heights has talked about a downtown, there's been previous efforts which included a town center study, another study called Vision, State Route Number Two from 2011, US Two Corridor Plan, there was a public art plan that was created when there was a discussion around roundabouts and art in our committee, the comprehensive plan that was adopted last year that I just mentioned, and of course, this downtown plan that we're working on, and the commercial zones that are proposed out of this. So not everybody may know this, but it used to be called the Galena Airport, Air Depot before Fairchild Air Force Base, and this is an older image of that area. So the downtown plan was a plan that we were able to kick off last year because the city received $50,000 grant from the Department of Commerce to do a secondary plan, that was one of the eligible activities, and specifically to look at housing. As you may have heard through a variety of media outlets, this entire region has a shortage of housing, and that is not going to be solved in the short term. So this plan's goal with the grant funds was to help develop a downtown area and to examine the opportunities for housing in Airway Heights. There were a lot of community engagement activities, so these were publicized through our social media, through Facebook, they were put onto the city's website, the city invested in postcards that were sent out on two different occasions, those went to every single address and every single P O box that our local mail vendor had access to. In addition, we did newsletters which come out quarterly, we had two different articles, and those go to every utility holder, every business license holder, and every address that the city has in their database to advertise opportunities to be engaged in this downtown plan and the development of the commercial zones. And these go all the way back to June of last summer, in which a postcard went out that had all of the engagement meetings for the entire summer from June through August on that postcard, so people could choose which activity that they wanted to participate in. So there was a visioning workshop on the 23rd of June, as well as a visual preference survey that was pushed out through Facebook and the city's website. At the end of July, there was a two-day workshop that was a Zoom meeting, so people could pop in and out of that as, as they were interested, as we were looking at scenarios for downtown and looking at factors like where should it be, what should be identity, what are some of the major issues with the downtown area? There were been several public workshops with the City Council and the Plan Commission, both in September and again in January. And to ensure that we would be getting additional feedback, another postcard was sent to all the addresses and P O boxes in January, for a January workshop on this draft plan and the draft commercial code. So we are moving forward today to a public hearing in which we are also re-broadcast through our Facebook account and have had all these materials on the website to try and make sure that we're reaching as many people as possible. But, you know, this is a way in which we are trying to reach out to people hopefully who have had the time to participate in these events over the last year. So what does the downtown plan do? It kind of synthesizes an analysis of what's really going on right now in our communities so we can better understand what's happening with our population, with our housing, with employment, as well as where we need to go with a downtown. So we are a little bit higher actually in population now than when this report was originally started, we're actually over 10,500 people. We are one of the fastest-growing communities in our region and in the state, and you can see from these population numbers how much that increase has been. So actually, from 2017 to 2020, we grew by 29% of what we have allocated by population. We do a regional allocation within Spokane County and all the small communities of how much we dissipate, we will be growing over a 20-year period, and we, we grew much faster than that projection for, was forecasted for us. We also had an analysis of housing, remember, I mentioned one of the purposes of this grant was to look at the housing needs in our community, and specifically in the downtown, and what the opportunities are. This analysis revealed to us that we are a majority renter-occupied community. We also have a very low vacancy rate, as does the county, which I'm sure everybody's been hearing over the last couple of years. We are also one of the more affordable communities, which I think is why it's been attractive to come to Airway Heights for both our rental and our homeownership opportunities, we're less expensive than the county. We do have a lot of housing units, but unfortunately, our particular market that we're at this point providing housing to is either a single-family home on a lot or a large multifamily complex, we don't have a lot of options in between that. And that, all that housing that's in between a detached, single-family home and a large apartment complex has been started to be called nationally the missing middle. So it's the type of housing that allows people to transition through their life cycle in renter or homeowner type of housing, it's not exclusive to always ownership or just rental, but also the size and the type of the unit, so things like duplexes, triplexes, courtyard apartments, and townhomes, which are single-family homes, they have common walls, they're on their own lots, are a product that we don't have available now in our community. We also have a significant number of our community members that are traveling out of Airway Heights in order to work. So 95% of people commute out to a job outside of the city, and 80% of, excuse me, 95% of people who are commuting into the city don't live here, and 88% of people who already live here are commuting somewhere else in the county in order to get to their, their employment. So in summary, the consultant looked at all of this data and made some recommendations for us. So we certainly need to increase the affordability and availability of housing, which is something we suspected. We needed to make our downtown a place where people wanna spend their time, and one of the complaints we heard through the community engagement process was that people did not want Airway Heights to continue to be a place that people pass through because of US Two and the destinations that may be either to the east of us or to the west of us, that we needed to provide more local employment opportunities, we need to have more housing options, we needed to have an attractive center to our community, a cultural center and economic center, and we definitely need to support our local businesses and employers, building on the strengths that we already have here in our community. And from that, the downtown plan worked on a vision, so Airway Heights has identified itself through engagement with our community to be an area that needs a downtown, have a sense of place, be very walkable, that is family-friendly, thriving, and attractive. And so these were some of the factors that came up through these conversations with the community about what we might need to do, and these actually gelled into some action strategies, which we'll see a little bit later. And before I forget, we did present actually to the West Plains Chamber of Commerce at the kickoff of the project, just to make sure that we were also reaching businesses in the area as well, to let them know we were kicking off this event because we wanted them to be engaged. So there were three scenarios that were presented through the summer, which included the visual preference survey about what could a community or downtown look like. Three potential scenarios, and based on the feedback, this is the preferred alternative that was recommended by the public, and this was briefed to our Plan Commissioner and City Council at the end of September as a result of all that community engagement. And so it envisions that we do have a downtown essentially very close to an area between Lundstrom and Lawson, that it, it does parallel US Highway Two. The recommendations were to add a north-south access along King Avenue so that it might have an area for having commercial and other activities as an access leading up into our, our area where we have residential, civic, and recreational opportunities, as well as, of course, the Sunset Park and, and school. It also recommended a lot of factors that you may expect to hear in community that that you may expect to hear in a community that's really bisected by a highway. We need to work on hand crossings on US Two to make it safer. We wanted to slow traffic in the downtown, but make sure we were allowing for through traffic because of Fairchild Air Force Base as a destination, looking potentially as a civic center in the downtown area. Again, coming back to the topic of housing, they've proposed a variety of methods in which we could get to more housing and a variety of housing, which includes increasing density north of the downtown, essentially in the area around Thirteenth Avenue and King Street, and that we needed to invest in streetscape in order to help for this vision to be realized, both for the integration of our commercial areas to US Two, as well as crossings and denser housing. So, I'm going to pause right there and see if there are any questions from the planning commission thus far about the draft downtown secondary plan.
No.
I don't have any questions.
This document is significantly larger, which you have added access to. It's been on the city's website under the planning department's secondary plan page since, I believe, probably December or January. So, it is available for the public if they'd like to look at it, but that's a pretty consolidated version of all the materials that are in there.
You're finished? Are you finished, Heather?
No, I'm going to move on to the commercial zones, but I just wanted to pause to see if there were any questions from the commission. Most notably, in the draft plan are a series of recommended action steps that we would take in order to implement this plan, and I think that's the value of this is laying out very strategically where and how we should invest. So, those include investigating facade programs for our local businesses. It includes having a discussion about what to do with Thirteenth and Fourteenth Avenue, which are right-ofways that are parallel US Two. How should they be used? How can they be used to actually enhance the business environment, the pedestrian environment? And we also are looking at, of course, the housing and what to do overall with US Two. So, Bill Grimes is also here this evening. He is our consultant with SCJ Alliance, and I'm not sure, Bill, if there's anything you wanted to add at this point to the downtown plan overview before I move into the commercial zones.
No, I think that's a great summary. Heather, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, well, I will move next into the second part of this overall project, which is an update to our commercial zones. So, this is a real image from a project that is proposed to be built in Airway Heights, and I thought it was really fascinating, because it does contain a lot of the pieces that we're proposing to formalize in the updated commercial zones. So, the purpose of our commercial zones was to help the downtown plan that we just had a very brief overview on be realized on the ground. So, through individual development permits, to be able to see buildings that have an association with the road that in the downtown area, for example, that would be more pedestrian-oriented, that would have buildings that would feel much more like a downtown area versus what may occur out on the east and west ends of the downtown, which may be more auto-oriented. It's to provide consistency with the plans that we've been working on. A lot of work has occurred with Airway Heights in the last two years, which includes that US Two Highway Corridor Plan I mentioned, the comprehensive plan, and now the downtown plan. We also, in the meantime, in the background, there's been a market analysis that Washington State Department of Transportation's been doing on US Two Corridor, looking at what may happen with development in the future. They're interested because of the traffic issue, but it's also helped us understand a bit about the market out there and what's going to be driving that market for uses in the future. Of course, we want to be looking at housing opportunities because of the purpose of the grant, and we want to be able to help facilitate investment in this downtown area. This is a quick view of our twenty twenty zoning map, and the area that we're talking about is really through the center of this image, which is predominantly the red and what might appear to you as pink. There, it's actually red with dots on it, but the red and the pink areas are really what we're talking about from city limits to city limits. And the very light pink area, which is south of US Two, is an area that we haven't put in past zoning development standard adoptions identified as something called the Village Square, which was, I think, an early step to help identify a downtown, and that coincides with the work that occurred this last year, where the community feels this is our downtown area. And this Village Square overlay is important, because there's going to be some recommendations from the consultant about what to do with that overlay zone. So, just to familiarize yourselves, the lighter pink zoning is actually called C One. It's called restricted or limited commercial. And the C Two is called general commercial. So, the bright red, I'll pop back. All the bright red is general commercial, including the polka dotted area, but the light pink in the center, that is the C One Limited or Restricted Commercial. So, overall, what the recommendations are are that we're going to be keeping these names of C One and C Two, that our downtown area should be overlaid with that older Village Square area that was in the light pink area I just showed you along US Two, that we should add a third commercial zone. We only have two right now to add a third commercial zone that will help create a transition between a downtown or pedestrian environment to an auto-oriented commercial zone that will go all the way out to the city limits. That we should integrate our zones into a single chapter, because right now, many of the standards you need to look for for commercial development are spread out over four or five chapters, so this will be ease of use. That we should introduce design standards to help create an envelope of a building that begins to express as individual building development occurs, the form that the community would like to see in a downtown environment and in commercial areas. So, having a relationship between the building and the street and the building and the sidewalk, and having really prominent entrances, so people know where to enter a building. And for buildings that are in the downtown, that they would not be as large of scale as perhaps a Costco or a Walmart, that they would be smaller and more intimate in its setting in the downtown. That we would include elements within the zone that start to make those connections between buildings and the right-ofway, which I've mentioned. And of course, that we need to look at the housing element of this plan and the zoning, which again was a purpose of the grant, to look where we might be able to have housing, but still be sensitive to our Fairchild Air Force Base and the compatibility requirements we've adopted through the ACU standards and the J-List, which ACU is an acronym for, I think, airport compatibility use zone. It's roughly what that acronym is, and then J-List is the study that was conducted through multiple agencies to look at this compatibility issue, and we did adopt some standards that go with that. For the general commercial area, we would continue to maintain that large format for commercial areas. We'd be still looking for enhanced crossings, again, looking at the opportunities for housing, being consistent with our J-List requirements and ACU's, and looking at the overall distribution of uses in the codes. The other recommendations are, we have too many overlay zones. So, the Village Square overlay was adopted a number of years ago, but it doesn't actually have relating standards, and so it's not helping to create a downtown environment. It's not getting us there. So, the recommendation is to actually remove that Village Square overlay, as well as that Heifer Square overlay, and that we would move to more of a centers and corridors concept. Now, centers and corridors is the idea where you have commercial nodes, and then you have commercial areas that run parallel to, let's say, an arterial. And you can imagine that a concentrated commercial area's uses and building standards may be a little bit different than along an arterial. Spokane has this type of commercial code as a close neighbor that we could take a look at of what they have and how it's been applied. It also, certainly, we need to make sure we're consistent with our J-List provisions. We do allow for what's called mixed use in certain areas. That's what the polka dots were on that map that I showed you a little bit earlier. It has requirements to have demonstrated community need for a mixed-use project and to do a sound analysis. But what mixed use is, is doing multifamily over an office or retail as part of a site development. And we do allow this under our current code. It's actually seventeen thirty-seven is the chapter, and it requires a conditional use, so it's an individual consideration. Each site is evaluated, each project is evaluated individually. It goes through a public hearing process. There is notification to Fairchild Air Force Base and other agencies, and this decision is rendered by an independent party called a hearings examiner to see if they can meet that criteria. So, here's what the proposed zone framework would be. So, we would keep a C One, but we would rename it Downtown for the downtown area. We would create a new zone called the C One A, which would be Downtown Transition. So, it would be east and west of the downtown, and then C Two, which would be Highway Commercial. And the description, I'm not going to read to you. These are in the text that you received, but this is for the public that are looking on the screen, and this is also available on the city's website, again, under City of Airway Heights Planning, under Suburban Plans. There's a link of this text. You can read everything that I have up here. But basically, downtown is more pedestrian-oriented, a smaller scale, more intimate civic activity, potentially, you know, pop-up markets and other activities would be permitted there. The transition is allowing for areas where you might have, again, somewhat downtown-oriented, but maybe not as much auto-oriented type of uses. And then, the C Two Highway Commercial would be more traditional, general commercial, or broad-range commercial uses. This is the proposed map, and an inset that focuses on where the C One A, which is the bright red, would be added. So, today, that area would would say that area is C Two, it would be transitioning to C One A. And then, the area that is in the core would remain as a C One, and there'd be some small recommended increases of that zone moving a little bit to the north, which you would see along in this image would actually be Lawson, and it would be along King Street, would be the other one, in which you'd see a little more proposed of the C One downtown zoning to be expanded.
Heather, the change will not affect the current zoning, zoning, right, with the new zone?
It would, and that's where I'll move into some of the proposed changes. These are just examples. There's actually a matrix in the draft, and I'll pull it up here in the hyperlink in just a moment. But it would. So, if the downtown zone, all, let me start with this. All of the zones would have design standards, and they have the same design standards. So, things like distinguishing the base from the top in a multi-store building, or having a prominent entrance with the use of, you know, the doorway feature and awnings that you'd have, glazing or windows on the front of the building, and that there would be material choices that would be selected by somebody building a new building. So, it'd move more toward this idea of form that meets the expectation of the community, but at the same time makes such an attractive building. There would be limitations. So, for example, for retail, it would limit it to forty thousand square feet. So, remember, I mentioned earlier, the idea is a more intimate feel in a downtown. So, a single, large, big-box store would not be something you would expect in a downtown. And so, the standard has been recommended to be modified to limit the size of the individual retail, so that you would have multiple smaller buildings making up your streetscape. It also distinguishes drive-through facilities. So, pharmacies, banks, and food facilities all can operate with or without a drive-through. What this is proposing is, in the downtown area alone, that there would not be drive-through facilities. They could occur in the C Two General Commercial, but the recommendation is not have drive-through facilities in this downtown zone, which is really just a couple of blocks wide. It adds some additional uses, like mobile food vending. You know, those are activities that occur today, but it would become more directly permitted, and it's part of a vibrant, active downtown area. The downtown also looks to limit the activities that are auto-serving and reserve those for the C Two Highway Commercial Zone, and would be allowed in some instances in the C One A, that transition area. So, you would need to be in that transition area to do a automobile sales, for example, because the idea in a downtown is not to have a large lot with vehicles for sale taking up a lot of space in your downtown area. So, you're getting the feel of what the recommendations are between the context of a downtown and a more or auto-oriented highway commercial area. And with that, Bill, did you want to add anything? And I'll pop up the actual text.
I think you've done a great job summarizing the distinctions between the different zoning districts. And if the commissioners have questions about why a C One A, we can also talk about that. And there are some pretty specific design objectives that we're trying to achieve with the C One A, and that's transition space between the C Two, which is what we're all familiar with, the Highway Two Corridor, and what we're hoping for in the downtown.
So, Heather, any existing facility that doesn't meet any of these requirements, are they grandfathered in? If we adopt this?
Yes.
I have some questions. Yeah, I noticed, or you mentioned that the new businesses, the smaller building businesses would not be allowed drive-up access. You know, with COVID happening and what has happened, most drive-up businesses are the ones that survived. A lot of people lost their businesses due to, people couldn't access them, and like, you know, what we all know, the McDonald's, all the drive-up facilities that helped them succeed and survive the COVID. And I would want to change that, because we want our businesses here in Airway Heights to be able to survive. And I just, I'm part of three-fifty Spokane climate change. I'm doing research on this, and we're going to have more types of diseases coming out with all the icebergs and everything melting. I think we need to plan sustainable and resilient to make sure our businesses can survive and the people can get the services they need. And then, I'm happy that you're adding this new code, the C One A. And I'm wondering, I was kind of going over the comp plan too, real quickly, and the downtown area. I know the zoning, I'm wondering if there, is this expanding the zoning for the whole downtown area, so they can do more mixed use, add more housing to the top of the buildings, because we set such a we're falling short on the housing stock in this area. And this would make it more walkable and sustainable communities. Anyway, those are just some of my two cents.
Well, let me address the first question with regards to drive-through business. Can everybody see the screen with the table on it? With the Ps and the Cs and the Ls and the Ns?
Oh, yeah.
Hank, Hank is shaking, said you can't see this on your Okay, let me do this. Let me It is the wonder of Zoom. Now, can you see it?
No.
There we go. Okay, perfect. And please let me know when you're not able to see what I have on the screen, because it's the idiosyncrasies of Zoom, that I can't pop back and forth between formats and documents. So, this is the use table that's in the draft that you have, and it has the C One, C One A, and the C Two. And what is distinctly different about this versus our existing code is, A, we have broader categor- um, we have broader categories of uses on the left hand side. So here where the, the hand is on the screen, you can see drive through business. Uh, and on the top, we've added numbers. And these numbers represent the sound contours that we adopted with our Fairchild Air Force Base compatibility overlays. So it isn't just a sound contour, it actually is a, a band on the map that indicates whether a use can occur or a use uh, would be required to get a conditional use permit or is not permitted because of another code. So remember I mentioned that today, in order to help a property owner or a interested citizen, determine if someone can do a drive through, Zach and I would have to look at about five different codes. Because they're not all condensed. So this is proposed to try and condense it, make it a little bit easier. It's not perfect. It's a little clunky because we still have to look back at some older codes. But this helps at least bring forward this idea that even within these zones, there's going to be areas where you might be outright permitted, have to do a conditional use permit or not permitted at all. And I'll go back to the colored map to show you why in just a moment. But uh, with regards to Commissioner Campobasso's question about drive through businesses, this entire table, the planning commission can debate um, what you would recommend to the city council. If you would prefer to have drive through businesses, which is right here in the table, be a permitted use or conditional use, we can make that change as part of your recommendation. Uh, just as a note, we're proposing that it would be under limited circumstances. You could have that drive through facility also in the C one A and in the C two zone. So only in the C one is there, are there recommendations to not have drive through. Now you could recommend that it be a P permitted. You could recommend that it be a C, which is a conditional use permit, which does require hearing. But it's an individual review of an individual case to see in context if it's the right place for a drive through. And remember this is a downtown area. So uh-
What was the reason for saying no for drive through in C one?
Because drive throughs separate the building from the context of other buildings. It makes a mix, makes or allows for the creation of individual paths um, separate from a contiguous, continuous potential downtown street environment. So when you think of other small communities, um, the city of Pullman or uh, downtown Walla Walla or uh, even, and even our neighbor, the city of Cheney. You do have areas where you see buildings fairly close to the street and building edge to building edge to building edge. A drive through in order to accommodate it uh, creates a need for a building to be isolated typically. Uh, and it breaks up the fabric of the downtown and Bill can pitch in a moment and add with that too.
How do you determine curbside pickup? Is it, is it the same, same standard as drive throughs or is that a, a different standard?
No, a, a drive through is, is literally a lane that's built that uh, is curb to curb that, that drives around the building to a window opening on the outside in order to allow for, for a product to be passed through the window to the vehicle. Curbside pickup is exactly what most businesses that are offering that service are doing. You pull up into the parking lot, it's the front door. And either somebody runs it out to you or you walk in and you pick it up and pay for it, depending on the individual business. So no, curbside, which is occurring today, is not included in drive through. This is only regarding building a drive lane and an exterior window to pass product through. Uh, it's associated with a building. Remember that could be a bank. It could be a pharmacy. It could be a food service. And um, there's even drive through florists. So I mean, that's why it's separated its own category because it's something that a business may ask for.
So I'm just envisioning a business in the future, putting a drive through in. They just don't pass it through a window. They go outside and say it's curbside. So how would we address that?
No, we would, we would not allow, if this was a no on this matrix in the site plan, we would not allow them to build that drive around the lane.
Okay.
They would only be able to do a curbside pickup. So it might be, uh, and I would do want to get to Commissioner Campobasso's second question about housing. Um, it is here in the table, but the, the biggest piece that I would direct the planning commission to consider is in the downtown environment, looking at this list. Uh, so we have housing, there's retail, you know, eating and drinking is, is allowed. Medical professional, government service, uh, religious facilities. That even talks about parking lots, light industrial, heavy industrial use, motor vehicle, sales run or repair, gas service, self-storage, adult business. Of these uses, as you're thinking to yourself, are any of these that you'd want to change from a no to a P for permitted or a C a conditional or vice versa? Um, so for example, limit light industrial or limited industrial, is it really appropriate in a downtown? Is a self-service or warehouse, a mini storage, really appropriate in a downtown? So think about these contextually when you look across the table. So while you're, you're pondering that, I just want to answer the question uh, with regards to housing. So this plan recognizes that we currently do allow mixed use by conditional use permit in a, in a banned area along US two and I'll, I'll move over to the map. This proposal is adding to that the ability to do townhouse, which is single family homes that share a common wall on each side. And they would be able to be connected to each other. And another term for those is called row houses. So this is introducing the idea that they could also be allowed in the same areas where mixed use is currently allowed in our code, like still through the conditional use permit. Um, so that we would be uh, helping to have residential. And there is a slight change for the multifamily on the mixed use. And that's right here in the C one, uh, which is going down to this footnote. Uh, number three, which is that residential uses have to be on the same parcel as office or retail. So the idea that it's stacked above an office or retail and looks like a true mixed use. So I'm going to stop sharing and then move over to the map real quick. So you can see that area again that it would apply to. Sorry, it's just it's being picky about what it's allowing me to select. There we go. So can you see the multicolored map on your screen?
We just lost it. You have the text of the proposed changes showing up. There you go.
Okay, good. It sounds like there's a couple second delay.
Hey Heather, I think you're on the wrong one still. You wanted the one that just showed the downtown corridor. It's got the red and pink.
Uh, I want to show the one that shows the whole city.
Okay, never mind. Yes.
So uh, just again, we're, the, the purple lines are the sound contours, but they're really a band, they're treated as a band of usage. And so in our current code today, um, anything that's in this polka dot color all through the, the downtown area today, our code on an individual basis would allow someone to apply to do mixed use of residential with commercial and office in the same building. They have to show community need uh, because this area is a sound contour and there's concerns about compatibility for noise and safety. Uh, but they would be able to go through a conditional use permit process in order to apply to do that. So the proposed map uh, doesn't show that the hatch lines, but uh, this bottom one here um, shows the mixed use that I, I showed you on the previous map. So it does go through the downtown and it does continue to propose to have mixed use in the downtown as well as the other commercial areas by conditional use permit. And the draft proposes town home units as well.
That's awesome.
We will probably discuss in more detail when we open up the discussion for the commissioners.
Okay. Well, with that, uh, that summarizes the presentation on both the downtown plan and the commercial zones. And with that, I'll hand it back over to our chair, Mr. Patel, to open it up to public testimony.
Heather, thank you very much. That was great work. Uh,
Thank you.
Few minutes, few seconds break. Uh, do we have anybody from the public signed up? When he comments on this downtown plan, proposed commercial zone?
Looks like uh, Jamie Walski may have a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to get um-
Can you just state your full name just for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's Jamie Kowalski. I'm with Fairchild Air Force Base.
Thank you.
Um, I'm the community planner at Fairchild. Um, and you know, I've, obviously I've been talking with Heather over the past and I just want to make sure that the planning commission is aware that um, the mixed use isn't necessarily compliant. And so I'm looking at what is the process for a demonstrated community need? And I don't know who has the power to say, okay, yes, this is a demonstrated community need that there is no place else where residential can go except for right here. Cause that's kind of how the regulation reads for the J-list and residential in that sixty-five to seventy noise contour. So um, I guess that's, that was my biggest question to Heather, I guess, yesterday in us, you know, having these, these conversations. Is um, and maybe I, I guess that's why I want to ask the planning commission, like what is your? What would the city of airway heights to have to do to have someone demonstrate that community need for housing?
Heather, can you give us a clarification on, on what she's asking for, please?
Absolutely. The, the code that she's referring to is in seventeen sixteen. It's that joint land study. And it, it allows for the application of this mixed use multifamily with retail and office upon demonstrated community need. Because it's going through a conditional use permit, which is a public hearing process. My, my belief is it's actually two parties that make the, the ultimate decision. The first one is the, the hearings examiner. They're an independent third party that uh, reviews the code and evaluates an application against the adopted decision criteria. And it's up to the applicant to demonstrate that uh, that there is a community need. And the hearings examiner's decision um, is uh, forwarded to the city council for ratification. So I think it's two parts. I think it's the hearings examiner makes a decision based on the evidence on the record. And that the city council's forwarded the decision and the council takes action by resolution to adopt the decision of the hearings examiner. That's the way that our current code.
And that would never, that would not come to the planning commissioner, in, in other words, right?
Not this particular application. There, there are other applications that come to the planning commission, but conditionally is permits go to the hearings examiner and to the city council.
I don't know if that answers your question, Jamie. Anything further? We can't hear you, sorry.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We have anybody else? If we don't have anybody else, I would like to close the public hearing for downtown plan and proposed commercial zoning at seven oh six. Is this Heather, just a question, is this going to city council? Are we moving it to city council?
You can move it to city council. At this point, the planning commission uh, could make a motion to discuss the downtown secondary plan and the commercial zones. There are two, two proposals. And you uh, could discuss and make recommendations uh, within that, including to move it forward, to hold it for further hearing. Uh, you could recommend variety of outcomes as well as uh, you could discuss and vote on individual changes to the text as well.
Okay.
So Heather, uh-
Go ahead.
Sorry, can I interrupt you?
Go ahead, Mark.
Heather, I'm just wondering, y- you pointed out earlier in the presentation, I don't know if I missed it, but um, you were saying to pay attention to the uh, categories down lower in the list, the um, adult businesses and such. What is the definition on those?
The municipal code has a definition of it adult businesses. And so it has to do with a business that sells uh, paraphernalia that are defined from the Washington State code, uh, which I'm gonna try and tactfully describe. So it could be um, devices or reading materials um, that are of a sexual orientation that are available uh, on a retail basis through the store.
Why are we saying that we're going to keep that completely out instead of leaving that on a limited condition? And at least judging that on a per case basis? I just feel like we're somehow legislating morality there.
Um, so just to dive a little bit into the subject, um, an adult business is typically different than a novelty store. Uh, and the examples that I could think of are in Spokane. So uh, there are several novelty stores on Division Street. They, they don't meet the definition of an adult um, business. And the reason that adult businesses are regulated typically to not have them in commercial areas is because they have documented secondary impacts to neighboring properties. Um, and those documented secondary impacts um, increase incident of certain crimes. Um, as well as, uh, so I mean, illiterating, um, prostitution um, are, are two of, of the ones that come to mind that are associated specifically with adult businesses. So um, in this recommendation, it would be to not allow for an, an adult business at all in the downtown as part of this recommendation. And I can pull the table back up if you'd like to take a look at it.
Yes, please. I think there was another uh, category on that as well that I was curious about.
Okay, can everybody see the table?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so this was adult business and the recommendation was to not allow it in any of the commercial zone. So the, the C one through the C two zone.
And then the- Okay, and you do have that. Okay, it was just that one that had all the uh, not permitted that I was curious about then.
It's also recommended that heavy industrial might be allowed in your commercial zones. And that limited industrial only be allowed in the C two zone. So that you're, that the downtown and the transition downtown wouldn't have light industrial activities in it.
Okay, that makes, so these agricultural, okay, there was the agricultural uses. Um, would that include like, I, I know you see in some of these cities where they're doing like little garden spaces within retail spaces as well. Um, I don't know what you consider that. Would that run afoul there possibly?
Um, I think it would really need probably some, some more specific guidance on it. To me, reading it, I would, to me, it reads as a- need probably some, some more specific guidance on it. To me, reading it, I would, to me, it reads as if it is actual silo, you know, where you're processing grain or you have a stockyard. Or you're, you're doing a, a commercial animal enclosure. To me, that, that's how I would interpret it. I would not interpret it to be a market, a farmer's market. To me, a farmer's market would be a retail use because people are bringing in a product and they're selling it.
Okay. I think, just in my opinion, I feel like on both those categories that we have all non-permitted, we should at least leave the ability for somebody to say, here's why I think we should do otherwise, instead of just outright saying no.
We can probably discuss that in the discussion when we open up, Mark.
Okay. Heather, if I, if I, if I can add, we do have the opportunity to permit these uses, I believe, in some of the industrial zone classifications.
That's a very good point. This is not a list representing our other zones, which are the light industrial and the heavy industrial zones where these activities would be able to be allowed or permitted because of the nature and the intensity. So they're producing smoke, dust, odor, noise. They would simply have the option of moving south on US two where all of that light industrial and heavy industrial areas. And then I should also note that in this table, SCJ's made the recommendation to actually eliminate the other L's. And so I think there are a couple remaining ones, so like the light industrial, there's some L's, there's the drive-through business that's L's. The motor vehicle stays repair to replace those with Cs. And the reason is because normally when you have an L on a use table, you would have a, you would have a use specific language added to the code saying why it needs to be limited. Contextually, is it limited in size? Is it limited in location? Or is there some factor you need to consider? And, and that has not yet been developed at this point. And so the other option would be to change all of the L's to a C, which would meet Mark's description of potentially allowing site-specific review of those uses through a conditional use permit.
Thank you, Heather. I really appreciate the information.
Maybe I guess we'll open up the downtown plan and proposed commercial zone for discussion amongst the staff and the commissioners, if somebody wants to give me a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to open up discussion on the downtown and commercial zone.
Somebody want to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you. We're open for discussion. I just wanted to add something to the comments that were earlier made. I think the vision for the city has come over several years. I've been here now. And I think one of the vision was that we wanted a downtown area where we could promote food traffic. And if we're gonna have food traffic in that particular area, the uniformity of the buildings and everything is important so that we don't have too much traffic there for people to have food traffic here. I just wanted to bring that up before we get into the conversation, especially, I think you brought up the question about drive-through businesses in, I think it's C one, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So we could probably open up for discussion and, and take it from there. And each person can probably make recommendations and as, as a body will probably wort on it and decide what we want to do with that.
If I could make a suggestion, Mr. Chair, to maybe make it a little bit easier for your, your discussion and debate, it might be easiest to start with the downtown plan.
Okay.
And see if the commission is comfortable with that document and potentially moving that forward to council with a recommendation and then moving to the commercial zones because the downtown
Two different.
Sub area plan is, is, is the guiding principle behind, behind the commercial zones.
No problem. Thank you for the recommendation. So let's begin our discussion with the downtown plan. If anybody has any comments or anything they want to share.
I know that the, the new commissioners, I, I don't know how much they know about this plan, but I know we spent quite a bit of time going over that plan. I feel really comfortable with everything that's been presented, everything we've discussed over the past half a year. Great work, Zach. Great work, Heather. It was an amazing thing. I look forward to seeing this go forward. I have no issues with the downtown plan.
I've been here almost four years with this committee and I've seen this plan mature its way and we got far, we got to where we are today by, you know, a lot of input from the local residents, people. I know COVID came into the play and it's changing the game plan everywhere, but I think that the, the staff is allowed that if anybody wanted a particular zoning, it's available in different location. But the uniformity of the aesthetic looks of the downtown has to be so that, that we are not, again, duplicating what we have on Highway two today. And if you go to Highway two today, you got, like Heather said, you know, two buildings, there's a space between them and it's, it's un-uniformity. And I think the people of Airway Heights would like to see a situation where they can have food traffic, people can meet. And I think traffic is also important because they put safety in concern there. That's my two cents to that.
Anybody? No, I agree with you, Cal. I think that's a good statement. One of the things is I was sitting here listening to everybody. I'm a newcomer, so I don't pretend to know anything. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen more than I talk. But you know, just one thing I wanted to toss out there as we move forward on all these plans and I know Angelina had brought, brought up the issue of COVID and how it affected businesses and the drive-throughs seem to be the only saving grace. But, you know, I don't think COVID shut our businesses down. Our state government shut our businesses down. And I've been, I've been writing a lot of letters to all of our state legislators, including Governor Inslee. And on a number of topics associated with this response. But I, I agree with you. I don't think people want to see a bunch of drive-throughs. And I, I don't think the businesses should be predicated moving forward, you know? If you want to open up a business here, you gotta have a drive-through. I, I don't think that's the right approach. But again, I'm gonna listen more than I, I'm gonna talk. And so once I get educated, I'm up to speed. Maybe I can make a better contribution, you know? So anyway, I just wanted to comment on what you had said.
Every opinion counts. So thank you very much. I personally don't, I mean, I'm not taking a position, but my view is I don't see that we need to change anything from what we have today. But if the commissioners feel like we need to change something, we're open to the discussion and more than willing to make that change. So I don't want anybody to think that this is etched in stone and this is the way it's going to be.
Yeah, you know, I, I was only thinking, you know, you know, and the curbside thing is always an option too as well. But like, you know, if you have four buildings all connected, probably the outer buildings, if there's room to have a drive-through, like say for pharmacy or some kind of restaurants, you know? You know, it would, you don't have to have a drive-through or that's not part of putting a business there, but it could be an option. Just how you placed, decided to place businesses too. It's just, just an idea, you know, I'm, I have, I, I think several generations ahead and that's what we have to do and just kind of seeing what would happen this past year, really observing with what the whole world's gone through and and the most of the businesses that made it through here was, was a lot of the drive-through ones. So I just was, that's just an observation of mine and I, I just would like, I would like all of our businesses to thrive and, and not perish, you know, because of a disease or pandemic, so.
To jump on what Commissioner Kababasso is saying, I, I just feel like we don't know the future. So why limit ourselves by saying no to everything within any category when we can say maybe, but our default is this?
If we do that, I mean, does that increase the, the, the process of approving projects and delaying projects going forward? I mean, that's like a blanket saying, okay, we'll, we'll allow everything but on a condition. Am I correct, Mark? I maybe missed.
I mean, Cal, I would, I would assume it would be like any other business opening in Airway Heights. You're gonna have to go through that whole permitting process regardless. Trying to open up something that's default, not allowed, you're gonna regardless find that out. But you can at least appeal that or try to get that conditional permit. And I, I mean, I'm just always thinking practically, what's gonna happen in the future? We don't know. We can have a plan for something, but what could go differently in the future is just unknown.
Heather, just for clarification, once you put no, is that a no completely or there is an appeal process?
Generally, it's, it's a no. They're always, always, regardless of how this code forms, is an ability to get what's called a zoning interpretation. And that determination is appealable and it's appealable to the believe it's depending on which section of the code. I think it's appealable to the hearings examiner, but generally speaking, a no means that you're not, not allowed to do that activity. Here's a couple of thoughts, you know, to help the plan commission with this table. The, the first is that, you know, you certainly could move some of these, these no's to a, to a C, which means a conditional use permit. It would require an individual application and it would put it through a public hearing process. By law, that application process can't take more than a hundred and twenty days. It is different than the process that a building permit goes through. Because it, it does require public notice twice. And of course, the hearing and it's appealable. Whereas an administrative permit, there's no public notice. There's a decision and that decision is appealable. So different timelines and a little bit different process.
Heather, who incurs that cost? The city or the, the person applying for that?
The appeal or the application?
The, the, the notice to the public, all that stuff. Who incurs that cost?
The applicant.
Okay.
The notice requirements we have right now are typically to put a sign on the property that contains all the relevant information. So it's, it's usually at least four feet by eight feet. It requires them to put a legal notice in the paper about both application periods. And they also have to post a notice at some publicly posting, posted locations, which includes City Hall, the community center and the Yokes.
Bill, I have a question for you. Oh, Heather, sorry. Are you finished or no? Apologize.
No, not at all. I was. No, I was just gonna say, there's some things that I, staff, I would not recommend that you change from no. I, I appreciate the comments and suggestions by Commissioner Collins, but for example, the uses that we've listed as no toward the residential end and some of the civic activities, those have no's on them because our J-list overlay zone says no. And that's, that's directly related to another code in which we have an issue of, of base safety and compatibility. But there are areas on the table that, you know, certainly is the, the planning commission discusses it tonight. And that's really starting from limited industrial down to the adult business where you certainly have the freedom to make a recommendation. You have the freedom to make the recommendation elsewhere on the table, but I think we, we, we would end up with an appeal before the growth hearings board. If, if the no's that were with churches, government facilities and residential uses were changed because of our J-list overlay. The others later down on the table, I think, are open for discussion, just as guidance.
No, I, I agree. I don't think we should put that at jeopardy at all. That J-list agreement should be, it's an agreement for a reason.
Just to ask the commissioner a quick question, anything in particular, anybody sees as a concern to them personally in reference to the, the limited or no or conditional?
No, I have no personal conflicts here. I just, it's an overall personal view towards saying no when we can say maybe.
Anybody else have anything they want to comment? Hank, anybody?
Well, I had one quick question. I was just looking at these categories and, and I'm sure it's included in one of these, but if someone were to petition the city for like, let's say they wanted to open up a halfway house. You know, would that fall under government, public service or utility structures, that one?
It would fall under social service.
Yeah, okay. Be captured in there. Okay.
Yeah, it would be social service and, and this is again, based on our understanding of our J-list is potentially, it could be permitted outside the San Coro tour. So some areas on the north side of US two in that proposed zoning expansion that goes a little bit north of US two, but in the C two, it would be permitted again outside the San Coro tour, but pretty much anywhere in that band, it's a, it's a conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
So here, here's some options for the plan commission. As you're debating, you certainly, if you feel comfortable, you could make a recommendation to forward the downtown plan. It sounded as if the commissioners were very comfortable with that draft sub area plan. You could make a motion and vote to move, move that forward at this time. And we could go through this table tonight and, and make some changes if you would like to, or you can pass it as it is. Or you could continue this hearing to next month and the plan commission could be prepared to discuss in depth the table that we have here. Just being conscious that we have, I believe, four other hearing items tonight.
Cal, would you like me to make a motion to pass the sub area?
Downtown plan.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pass the downtown sub area plan.
To the city council.
Yeah, sorry, to the city council.
Anybody want to second that? Can I get somebody to second that, please? Nobody? Are we not allowing the downtown, downtown plan to move forward?
I feel like we may be confusing the two new commissioners here. We're talking about two separate things. The, the first one is that downtown plan that we talked about. The second one is this chart that we're discussing right now.
We're gonna split it up just to, if we need to continue. So the first, first one, like Mark said, the downtown plan, which is the Airway Heights.
Yes, I, I second to move the plan.
The downtown plan, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just thinking about the chart, though, I think.
No, we can, we'll end on that after we finish this.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Can you see the downtown on the screen? Sorry.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So now we're gonna open up the second half of that is, which is the proposed commercial zoning. So I'd like to talk to the commissioners, how you guys want to handle this or what do you feel about it? So I'd like to talk to the commissioners, how you guys wanna handle this or what do you feel about it? So I guess we can decide whether to extend the public hearing or we move it forward. Or I don't think we should make the changes tonight because I I we still have one, two, three, four, five items to go through. Probably, it's already seven thirty, so you'll probably linger. So if you guys wanna push it out or just let me know what what everybody feels like.
In the interest of time, I think we should just, if we can, Heather, can we separate everything above limited industrial and pass that on to the city council and then everything below discussed in a future meeting? Or do we have to do it all as one?
My recommendation would be to consider to consider this whole thing because it's a single, it's a single use document. And I believe Bill in the chat mentioned that he wanted to add something with regards to the uses. Is Bill still here? Did we lose Bill?
He's there. Go ahead, Bill.
Very good. Thank you. I was having a hard time with my mute button here. Just something to think about, looking at this table. The the Ns and the Ls and the Cs represent what we can do now. Heather was talking earlier that some of these uses are unique enough that they might warrant having special standards developed here in the near future to control them. You know, and so we might see a use here that has an N today just because we don't really have the provisions in code now to control its design in a way that makes sure that it happens in a way that's compatible with that particular zoning district. So when we when we think about a drive-through use, for example, we think about the the driveway having a direct access onto the street. And that does a couple of things. It really interrupts the feeling and the the texture of a downtown area. You have cars driving across a sidewalk and we're trying to keep that sidewalk as a place that is a safe refuge for pedestrians. So there's a bit of a conflict there. And by having a driveway appear on the street, you're also eliminating the opportunity to park two or three cars on the street, which is something else that we're trying to be able to provide for, is that kind of an on-street parking environment. Now, in the downtown, particularly on the north side of Highway two, there's an alley between Twelfth and Thirteenth Avenues. And maybe there's a way that that alley could be used to accommodate vehicular traffic, you know. So if we if we were to consider drive-throughs in a downtown area, we would probably need to also consider some very specific design regulations that pointed their traffic back out toward the alleyway and then to one of the north-south streets to rejoin Highway two, rather than have them feed onto Highway two directly. But absent those kinds of standards in our code, we we really can't exert that level of design control. So what you see in this table now as an N, an L, or a P could change based on how the commission looks at design control for these particular types of uses. So that's all I really wanted to say about that, is that, you know, this this is a table that we're really proposing as an interim solution until we can get better design guidance on some of these uses that we really think might need some special handling down the road.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I just want to throw one thing out there for this for your structured parking and public parking. I don't know if the city's planned on putting in electrical car charging stations. I don't know that. I'm just asking. Would we have to insert that in this or?
Yes, no, the to answer the first question, yes, the city participated in a grant application with SRTC, the Spokane Regional Transportation Council, to put electrical charging stations in. And so Spokane County and the committees within that did receive the grant. And Airway Heights is potentially one of the locations where they will cite that. Electrical charging stations don't require structure. This require a site with the podium and the ability to to drive up and and to do that at a particular location. So none of the details about where that would go have been put together as of as of this point. SRTC is the lead on on doing that. So it I would say it doesn't require structured parking in order to do that. Public parking in this section, and Bill can correct me if I'm wrong, is the idea of creating a public parking lot as the sole use on the on a piece of property. So parking, when you build a building, is accessory and it's something you're expected and required to do, and it doesn't require any special permission. But a public parking lot is a lot where it's the only use on the property and it's in most often it's used as a situation in which there would be a relationship of fee to the use of the lot. And Bill can correct me if I'm wrong. So the idea is you you in a downtown setting or within the community, you may want to consider where you would put either structured parking or a public parking lot that would be available for individual space rental or lease in the context of the downtown.
Any anybody else have any questions or comments?
Cal, I think we should table this till a future date when we have more time to discuss it at length.
That's fine. Any how does everybody else feel?
Yeah, I would second that motion.
Okay, so in this case, we'll keep the public hearing open till the next month. Would that be appropriate? Or Heather, I need some advice. Would we leave it as an open public meeting?
Yeah, you would, if you, so we have a first by Mark and a second by Hank of the motion to continue tonight's public hearing essentially to April. And that as part of that motion, that you might wanna consider the ability to reopen public testimony at that next hearing as well.
How would we handle the discussion between the commissioners as far as their views on the Ns and the Ls before the meeting? Because we don't wanna, should we wait for the meeting to do that?
You do need to wait till the meeting because we cannot have the Plan Commission discussing or voting on a topic that's on a hearing item outside of the hearing. But I would recommend, should you vote to pass this motion to continue the commercial zone discussion to continue hearing next month with the possibility of of opening public testimony, that the commissioners can prepare with their version of this table and we can just work line by line through it. And we can, as staff, can bring a table that shows where what our current zone allows. So you can compare the current zone to the proposed.
Heather, would it be against the law for us to meet up with you individually to hear those out before the next meeting?
You can't do that.
You you can meet with Zach or I, both of us, on one-on-one, absolutely, to answer any questions and discuss the code with you. It's only that you that you're not able to debate a topic that's in a public hearing setting either by email or in person without having an advertised meeting. So yes, you can do that individually and we'll be happy to sit down with you.
I would personally love to schedule a time over the next four weeks to sit down and just ask any questions about any of these individually. That way, going into the next public hearing, we don't have to spend too much time discussing it.
That would be good. So we already have a motion, right, to move this, leave this public hearing open during the next meeting?
Mark, but I'll make it now. I make a motion to continue the public hearing on the commercial zone until April.
Somebody want to second that?
I I seconded it.
Oh, you did? No, we just wanna make sure.
I I jumped the gun, Mark. I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll leave that open till the next hearing and please, before the meeting, let's be prepared so we don't go into a lengthy discussion. But like Heather said, you're more than welcome to ask questions.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Let's go to the next public hearing item, which is the comprehensive plan amendment frequency amendment. Are those two things?
It's it's one.
Okay. I'd like to open up the public hearing at seven forty-one for comprehensive plan amendment frequency amendment. I'd like staff to take over.
Okay, let me make sure I got everything up here. Sorry, my Zoom's always fun to juggle. Can you guys see the code there? Okay.
We can make a teeny bit bigger, Zach.
Yeah, sure.
That's good.
That's good. Okay. So these next three public hearings are gonna go a little quicker than that last one. These are, these are primarily administrative items. The purpose behind these items is to get us into full compliance with GMA and with the Department of Commerce. So these three I'm gonna talk about and then the next one Heather is going to talk about. Or are simple code changes that need to be done to get us into that position. So this first one here is a proposal that adds chapter seventeen point oh three point oh eight five, the comprehensive plan amendment process and frequency to Airway Heights Municipal Code seventeen point oh three general provisions. So the section you're looking at here is that is all the underlying here. It's a pretty small section. And essentially, it provides a timeline and process for the annual amendment process for the for the Airway Heights Comprehensive Plan. This is consistent with RCW thirty-six point seventy-eight, one thirty-two. So essentially, once a year, the city is allowed to amend its comprehensive plan. What this does is establish a timeline for that and also identifies what process you need to take. So what we do in here is identify when smittles can be received, which is between November thirtieth and December thirty-first. It also identifies complaint amendments as type-two applications, which they're already identified within our code as a type-two application, but this reaffirms that. So for anyone who wants to make a complaint amendment, they'll know the process they need to go through for posting and stuff like that. So it's a pretty small amendment. It's pretty simple and it is required by GMA. So we are essentially just adding this to our code. So for anyone who wants to make an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, they now know the process and when they're allowed to submit. And if you guys have any questions, I can answer those for you.
I don't have any questions.
I don't. Are you done with this or no?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Oh, okay, all right. So I'm just gonna open it up with comments if anybody has signed up for this comprehensive plan amendment. Do we have anybody on the public side? Anybody? No. Right. I'll give you fifteen seconds. I'd like to close the public hearing at seven forty-four PM for comprehensive plan and amendment and open for, if somebody can give me a motion to open up for discussion.
I'll make a motion to open up the initiative of the zoning. To pub.
Comprehensive plan.
Sorry, Cal. I'm tired.
Who wants to second that?
I would second.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open for discussion. Anybody have any comments, commissioners?
No.
It's just a change, so there's no comments or nothing. Heather, do we move this to city council or we just approve it for you guys to change it? So I missed you there. Sorry.
Go ahead.
You're you're moving all of these items to city council if you should choose, but we we needed to get you to have a vote on the motion to put this on the table for discussion. So we had a first and a second. Is there is there a vote or could you ask for a vote?
Yes, for for this one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a vote to put it on the table for discussion.
I'd like to get a word to open up the discussion for comprehensive plan and amendment frequency amendment.
Aye.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
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 There's a delay here. Aye. I'm sorry. Hey, does anybody need five minutes for break or anything?
I would, okay, we pass this one real quick, Cal.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna move to the next item?
We still have to pass this one on to the city council, though, Cal.
Oh, I need a motion to.
To discussion.
I I need a motion to move. Go ahead.
To pass this to the city council.
Second, anybody?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sometimes I lose track. Okay, I'm sorry, guys.
No, you guys are are very tired. So here's a here's a couple of options. So you can go straight to a motion for each of these hearing items to pass it to council. Inherently, in the rules of Robert's Rules of Order, you have a discussion after the motion's on the table. So if if you feel strongly right away on each of these that you feel good about it and you wanna move forward, that could be your first and only motion I move to pass X ordinance on to city council for approval. And you can cut, you can kind of all vote out with that. But if you're worried that you all need to have a discussion, like the last one, the the downtown plan, that's where you can say, well, I wanna open it up. I'm gonna make a motion that we discuss, you know, so so forth. So.
But I cannot ask before the motion for discussion, right? If anybody wants to discuss in a sense of time?
Yep.
Okay. I think, okay, so we're done with that. So we're gonna open up the public hearing at seven forty-eight for manufactured homes in R-one zone amendment.
All right.
Who's doing that? Zach?
Yep. Get that back. Okay, and and once again, like I prefaced, the the last amendment there, this is again part of this this group of amendments for our Department of Commerce, making sure we're in compliance with everything so we can apply for various grants. The second piece here is to, it proposes adding chapter seventeen, oh, I'm sorry, that's that's the next one. This proposal is to amend seventeen point oh six point oh three oh permitted uses within the R-one zone to include manufactured homes, amending the definitions of manufactured and mobile homes within seventeen point oh four to be consistent with the definitions provided within RCW fifty-nine point two zero point oh three oh and amend seventeen point oh seven oh three oh permitted uses of the RM zone to be consistent with the requirements of RCW thirty-five sixty-three point one six zero and thirty-five point twenty-one point six eight four. So growth management requires that cities provide policies that do not regulate manufactured housing differently than site-built housing. So currently, our R-one zone code allows for modular housing, which by our own definition does not include manufactured housing. So this amendment will bring the allowed uses section into conformance with state law, which is the amendment we have here in our R-one zone. This amendment also provides updated definitions of manufactured homes and mobile homes to differentiate the two and also to provide consistency with the definition within RCW twenty-nine twenty point oh three oh. So the first piece we're looking at here is we're removing modular, adding manufactured, adjusting what a manufactured home is by our definition. The second piece here, which has permitted uses within the RM zone, is also adjusting the definition to make sure it's consistent with what we have in the new R-one zone. And the third piece here is adding the manufactured home and mobile home definitions to seventeen point oh four, which is our definition section, to make our definition consistent with what the state defines mobile and manufactured homes as. So essentially, we're allowing manufactured homes within the R-one zone because state law requires it. We are adjusting our RM zone to make sure it's consistent with our new definitions and we're updating our definitions to be consistent with what the state has. So if you guys have any questions, we can go from there.
I don't have any questions.
We have anybody in the public? Any comments on this subject? Wait fifteen seconds. I guess we don't have anybody, so we will close the public hearing at seven fifty-one.
Cal, I'll make a motion to pass this R-one change for manufactured home off to the city council.
Somebody wanna second that?
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all in. Thank you. Like to open up the public hearing for, yes, citing of the essential public facility amendment at seven fifty-two. Zach?
Yeah, give me just one sec. Sorry, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we have this. All of these codes, by the way, are all available on our website. So they've been publicly available since we started this process. If anyone in the public wants to look at them, see what our amendments are doing, that is available on at airwayheights.org or cawh.org slash planning. This last piece here that I'm going to be speaking about, Heather will be speaking about the, the next piece, is again, another one of these code amendments we're required to have for growth management. So, this proposal is to amend the Municipal Code seventeen, oh, I read the wrong one again. This proposal adds chapter seventeen point three eight essential public facilities to Airway Heights Municipal Code Title Seventeen zoning, identifying and providing the citing process for essential public facilities in conformance with RCW thirty-six point seven zero A point two hundred. So essential public facilities are just that their, their facilities are essential to the public. Things like airports, things like fire departments, air force bases, stuff like that, large public facilities. So, growth management requires municipalities to provide provisions that are consistent with essential public facility citing process and county-wide planning policies. So, the citing process of essential public facilities is actually currently done in Spokane County at the county level. So, the city of Airway Heights does not cite any essential public facilities. This amendment does not propose to change that. What this amendment does is to provide the process with, it codifies the process within the Airway Heights Municipal Code. So essentially, we're adding the chapter to essentially reference the essential public facilities citing process that's done at the county level. This code language is very similar to other municipal, municipalities throughout Spokane County. Spokane Valley has to go very similar to this. So essentially, what we're doing is referencing, I believe it was a two thousand and three document that was sound by the, signed by the Board of County Commissioners, that included Airway Heights. So, this is, this isn't proposing to change anything, it's just essentially codifying the process we already have. And if you guys have any questions.
Thank you.
Don't have any questions.
Okay, for you, there's no questions, we're gonna open up for public comments at five fifty-four. We'll wait fifteen seconds to see if anybody wants to say anything. I would like to close the public hearing at seven fifty-five.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a motion to pass on the essential public facilities to the city council.
Anybody wanna second that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The next, I'd like to open up the public hearing for airport overlay zone amendment at seven fifty-five.
Yeah, item of these adult family homes.
Oh, did we miss that? I'm sorry, I apologize. I'd like to open up the hazard family homes amendment, public hearing at seven fifty-five. Heather, Zach?
Well, this, this one's me.
Oh, is you? I, I was thinking you were gonna do the airport one, sorry.
No, I'm, I'm doing the airport one too, but this one would be pretty quick. This is a copy of the ordinance in your packet, and it goes with a staff report with regards to the citing of adult family homes. So, in general, as Zach had mentioned, the Department of Commerce, the State of Washington, provides guidelines of how communities ensure consistency between their development standards and their comprehensive plan. It's a very broad statement under Revised Code of Washington thirty-six seventy that we're required to have consistency. And in this particular case, the code, actually the state law, requires that local jurisdictions do not discriminate against adult family homes in the same zones that a single-family residence would be permitted. Now, there are state definitions of what is an adult family home, and the dilemma was, our existing code was requiring them to go through a conditional use permit. So, by the code we have today, we were, we were treating and are treating single-family residences and adult family homes differently. A single-family home could just get a, a building permit, whereas a, an adult family home would be required to go through a conditional use permit, which we've talked a lot about tonight, which includes a public hearing. So this rectifies that, brings us into compliance with the state law, and we rely on the state definition of what is an adult family home, which is for individuals that are eighteen or older and have a mental or physical disability. They can have up to six individuals in a home setting, a residential setting, and up to eight by additional licensing by the State of Washington. So, just to summary, this would allow for adult family homes by right in the same zone that a single-family residence would occur. It could be conversion of an existing home or a new one built to accommodate it. And, and in this way, we're ensuring that we're not discriminating against those that have disabilities. In this case, mental and physical disabilities, at least eighteen years of age or older in our community. We did have two requests in the last year to cite adult family homes, and we, in the interim, worked with our city attorney to develop a written interpretation that allows us to administratively at this time, allow for adult family homes consistent with the state law, so that we were not running into a legal issue because of our own law at the city of Airway Heights being inconsistent. This would impact our definition section under seventeen oh four. We added it to the zoning matrix under seventeen oh five, and we also added it as a permitted use in the single-family zone under seventeen oh six and the multifamily zone under seventeen oh nine. And that's the proposal in summary, and I'll hand this back over to the chair for the remainder of the hearing.
We have anybody signed up for public comments or here? We don't have anybody for comments. I'd like to close the public hearing at seven fifty-nine.
Sheriff Patel, I'd like to make a motion to pass the adult residential home definition to the city council.
Do we need to put the resolution number in that motion, or that's enough?
We can add that to the minutes. The resolution numbers are attached to each of the staff reports.
Anybody wanna second that?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The last one.
Yeah, let, I, I'd like to open up the public hearing for airport overlay zone amendment at eight o'clock, eight PM. And I would hand it to Heather to present.
Right, I will put this up on the screen, and we will get through this as efficiently as possible, because this has been briefed to the planning commission previously. So, in summary, we currently have an airport overlay zone in our existing Title seventeen point one five. We're proposing to repeal. That means that we would remove it from our municipal code, and we would adopt a new chapter under the same number seventeen fifteen called Airport Overlay Zone. The purpose of this would to bring the city closer to compliance with a requirement under growth management called airport compatibility. Every city or county that has an airport adjacent or in its proximity is required to adopt standards to ensure continuity in the future of operations of an airport. So it has to do with compatibility between an airport and other land uses around it. Our original code was adopted in two thousand and eight, and it was a very simple code that only adopted basically safety areas at the very end of the runways, and I'll show you a map of what that looks like. So as you can see, the existing airport overlay zone only restricted development essentially at the very end of, of the existing runways. And here's what runway number three would look like if it were built, and so none of that touches the city limits. So ironically, it had really no impact on any development within the city because of the distance still that the airport has. In two thousand and sixteen, the Spokane County, Spokane International Airport and City of Spokane convened, and they developed a new series of recommendations and standards for airport compatibility and safety. Airway Heights did not participate in that process. And so we have different standards immediately outside of our city limits than Spokane County does for airport safety and compatibility. We're proposing to adopt a very similar ordinance to the City of Spokane's and brief that previously, and I'll show you what that map would look like, because I think it's easier to show you visually of the change versus going straight to the text. And I'll pull this over. And I just wanna do a shout-out to Zach, because he prepared all of these maps for us, and he is great at it. He doesn't like all the colors. I love it, it's great. I think it really, really describes what's going on, but it's a huge leap for us to be able to look at something that's described dimensionally and be able to apply it to a map and to our own analysis and have our own system so we can update our maps. And so, that's hallmark for us in, in two thousand and twenty-one to be able to do that as the city of Airway Heights. So, there's a lot going on in the map here, and, and I'll just draw your attention mostly to the three airfields. So, these two, that the hand is hovering over on the screen, and please tell me if you can't see my computer. These are the existing runways. This one over here, to, further to the west, is the proposed third runway. And why we planned for that is so that we don't allow uses today for an airport expansion that will occur in the future and create an incompatible use. What the county and the city adopted, and what we're proposing to adopt as well, is a new system that are called ACZs one through five, and those are airport compatibility zone. That's literally what the acronym means. The only airport compatibility zone that crosses the city limits of Airway Heights is the blue line, which is ACZ five. Everything else is currently outside of the city limits, within Spokane County, or falls within the City of Spokane. So just to orient you, this is US two, going through the map. The black line is the city limits, and the colors are our zoning. So, light gray is light industrial, dark gray is heavy industrial, red is commercial, the medium blue is high-density residential, the light blue is low-density residential or single-family residential. So this is what we're proposing to adopt. Even though it falls outside of our jurisdiction, for the most part, we would, we would adopt as a whole an ordinance that mimics the City of Spokane's ordinance. We've vetted this with Spokane International Airport, and we've vetted it with the Washington State Department of Transportation Aviation Division, which also has jurisdiction over local jurisdictions' compatibility with airports, and it has passed. The both of them have accepted the mapping, and they've accepted the proposed zoning text that we're proposing for you tonight. So that's very important to let you know that for purposes of the airport and, and their state entity that, that does partial oversight, they've accepted the draft we have before you. Any questions on the map before I go back to the text?
Heather, do you have to work at all with the FAA on any of this stuff, or just the Washington State guys?
We don't work with the FAA. There are some, there are some areas that are beyond our, our reach, if you so to speak, as a local jurisdiction. And federal, federal regulation of airspace is one of them.
Okay, thank you.
The reason, just as, as a footnote of why we have this, is because it's, it's embodied as a state law on growth management that we have to do this, because there's a, there's a relationship there that a local jurisdiction needs to embrace with the airport facility to basically have land use planning around it. So, the next piece that I will put up on the map is the airport overlay zone. And in its entirety, it's very similar to our current code, and I'll show you how that is similar. So it talks about the purpose of airport compatibility, why are we doing this, why are we adopting these standards? It talks about a bunch of federal aviation standards that have to do with how eventually there are safety areas measured in the maps that you just saw, that Zach actually translated to put those contours onto the map. But the most important ones are simply that there are these overlay zones. It's, it becomes a secondary land use tool over existing zoning. So if you have commercial zoning, you now have an airport overlay zone over it, and so you have to look at both codes in order to understand what's permitted and not. It also, very importantly, talks about the things that are prohibited in this area. This is very important to the airport, and so you've probably heard these kinds of things, like, you know, you can't point anything up in the sky that would create glare for a pilot. You can't have hazardous materials below an area where, where the airport overlay safety area is. And that gets into the accelerants and, and the plumes and the other types of uses. Most importantly, it also has standards with regards to basically height. And there's a whole process that they wanted us to have about what is the maximum height, and if, if there's any deviations to that, because it's the airspace. Remember, that's the piece where, you know, planes are leaving at a certain angle as described in this document, and they need to make sure that there's nothing higher than what that, that flight departure and safety area is. And most of this is never gonna apply probably in the city. It's gonna be in those other ACZ areas. The piece that is probably the most important has to do with the use classifications, and I'm gonna run through these with you. So, this is consistent with our existing code as, in its form today. We're just moving this forward into the new code. So residential uses, they're generally considered to be incompatible because of safety concerns and noise impacts, and it describes broadly what residential uses are. There are high-intensity uses, which have the ability to concentrate people in an area, and they're considered to be incompatible because of the large number of people put into the safety area. And those include gyms, lodges, concert halls, universities, ironically funeral home isn't here, but amusement park, that circuses and a few other extensive list of activities. I'm glad that Hank got that. And then there are vulnerable occupant uses. So these are ones where the, the people that are, are in that space, even if temporarily, are particularly sensitive to noise and potentially a crash, and those include daycare, schools, hospitals, retirement homes and nursing homes. So you have a large concentration of people who may not be able to easily leave a facility and, and, you know, significant issue if there is a crash or, or a noise issue. Critical community infrastructure, these are things that are absolutely necessary. So fire stations, police stations, substations, et cetera. Hazardous uses are storage of hazardous material, toxic material, flammable, et cetera. And then low-intensity uses don't concentrate people. They don't have hazardous material. They're not sensitive to loud noise. So those include things like auto repair, towing, cemetery, as well as, you know, low-density types of activities that could occur where there's a lot of people and there's nothing explosive or dangerous in the area. So these are consistent pretty much with our existing code, and they apply as use categories. These are intended to lump large groups of uses together. This is very different than the hearing that you had earlier this evening, where we got very specific about different types of uses. And so we have, we're adopting a, a use table, very similar to the hearing earlier this evening. And so we have, we're adopting a, a use table, very similar to the hearing earlier this evening that talks about all those A C Zs. Now, we are adopting a table that shows all of them, even though they're not inside of our city because it shows that we're consistent with the county and, and the city of Spokane's codes. Really what we're focused on is this number five because it's the only zone that crosses over our city limits. That's why we looked at the map first. So here's how we would propose. We would propose that we would allow residential uses under a limited basis. And that limited basis says that it has to be zoned residential in order to have residential uses. It's important because we also state that if it's zoned commercial, you can't have a residential use in it. High intensity uses would also be limited. Remember those high intensity from the use category up above goes with the footnote number two, which is right here indicating that these activities have to have a maximum density per acre. This is a tool to try and reduce the number of people for, let's say, a theater inside the safety zone. So we're less likely in a case of a tragic incident have people that potentially could be harmed or, or killed as a result of a plane crash. So we're reducing the density under this footnote number two, but it's still allowed. Then the table goes on to talk about vulnerable occupant and that's also limited in the proposed table. And that would be footnote number four. And these uses are only permitted at less than a hundred and eighty eight, eighty people per acre, which by the way is consistent with our J list standards. We have other areas, remember in the sound contours we saw earlier tonight where they're limited to a hundred and eighty people per acre and so forth. Then it goes on to describe that we, we do allow critical infrastructure. So sort of pump stations and fire stations, police stations, those can all occur. Their hazardous uses are limited. They do require conditional use permit. And then low intensity uses would be permitted. So that is how we would look at, at uses in this A C Z five under this proposal. And that's really the, the draft highlights. And this is the map that you just saw earlier. And again, we're only talking about the area within the blue line inside the city limits. Yes, the city could eventually annex further to the east. They would just be even closer into that A C C vibe. And that's how our use table would, would provide for future uses in those areas as well as in the existing city. With that, I'll hand that back to the chair and I'm available for any questions from the planning commission.
I have no questions.
Heather, can I just ask a, a real quick question? It may very well be outside the scope of this document. But did, did the city of Airway Heights go through some sort of an exercise like this with Fairchild Air Force Base's flight path?
Yes.
I suspect, right?
Yes, the, the city went through a similar process with multiple agencies, Fairchild and the airport back in two thousand and twelve or, or leading up to two thousand and twelve. And the city adopted a, a whole chapter just like this one.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to open it up for public comments. If anybody has signed up or want to say anything on this subject. I guess there's nobody signed up, so we'll close the public hearing at eight fifteen.
Chair Patel, I'm going to make a motion to pass on the airport.
Go ahead. I can hear you.
Chair Patel, I'm going to make a motion to pass the airport code to the city council.
Can I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just wanted to say thank you very much, everybody. And Hank, I think just a suggestion since you come from a port background is if you ever get a chance, you need to understand how the air, air force base overlay and the zoning works because it will help us as, as you being part of the commissioner, if there is any questions. But I think you probably, if you get a chance to catch up with that.
Yeah, I know.
There's a lot of history on that, so.
That's why I asked Heather the question. I was curious because, you know, you can't help but notice the planes going over all the time.
Every time we have a issue with that, it's great if somebody who's knowledgeable can, can be on our side and advise us, you know?
Yes.
But anyway, if I, I like to open up the action. Oh, we closed the public hearing completely, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to move to action items and I would like to get a suggestion from the staff in how to pick the vice chair person for the planning commissioner.
So this was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting this evening about amending the agenda to add under action item election of a vice chair. The election of a vice chair is to, has a defined role, which is to actually step in when the chair is not available and run the meetings. In this case, Sean Fell, who recently resigned from the planning commission was the chair, vice chair, excuse me, of the planning commission. And that vice chair position is now vacant. So the commission could entertain a motion to open up an election for the vice chair position if they so wish to do so this evening, or you could put it on to your agenda for April to have that discussion and to vote to elect a vice chair.
Can I get a feedback from the commissioners, how they feel about this?
I'm going to be completely honest, Chair Patel. I don't know the other two commissioners yet. And you're already sitting in that chair position.
I would probably recommend that we do it tonight. And Heather, am I, am I allowed to make a, recommend, pick a candidate or no?
Uh.
I mean nominate, nominate the word. No.
Uh, I think that you can discuss it and you can ask another member if they're willing to make a motion. I think you can certainly talk about potentially who should be a vice chair. But as, as the chair, I don't, I don't think you're
Allowed.
permitted to make your own motions.
Okay. No, I mean, okay. I, I cannot nominate anybody like this.
You can, you can suggest to the planning commission.
We have three people, so. I, I don't want to delay this because, you know, as next month's meeting comes up, if something happens and we don't have a backup, so I, I don't know how the, the two new commissioners feel about picking themselves or a candidate. I don't know. Now, this is a difficult one. So I was leaning more towards somebody who's already been on the commissioner for a while. And I, I was thinking that would probably be a good choice. But I, like I said, my hands are tied right now.
Well, look, I'm never one to back down from anything, so I'll make a motion to step in myself as the vice chair. I don't know if that's allowed or not. But I know I appreciate being on this commission and doing the work that we do.
We appreciate that too, you know, it's a lot of time. Everybody puts in every week, once a month, but it's, it's, you know, it seems easy that it's once a month thing. But when it comes to that Wednesday, it's the most difficult thing. I don't know if you guys feel like that for me. Five o'clock, I'm like pressured. I said, wow, I gotta make this.
So Cal, can I, can I interject here and, and nominate Mark Collins to be the vice chair?
You're seconding that, I guess.
Well, I mean, he was self nominating himself.
So you can nominate him.
He's basically volunteering his services, but if you need a nomination, I will be happy to nominate Mark Collins as the vice chairman if, if that's good.
And I'll second that.
That's good. Thank you very much, you guys. You made it very easy. All in favor for Mark?
Aye.
Aye. I will pick Mark. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Cal.
I couldn't use your name, by the way. All right, we're close with the action item. I'm not going to rush. Okay, Zach, I'm going to go through the list. Commissioners, commissioners report, I'd like to open up that and I would like to welcome the two new commissioners. We do appreciate, both of you have an extensive knowledge about planning and, and, and related areas. So it would be very nice to have people from different view. And I think today's meeting kind of showed that, that both of you are bringing something to the table and I'm glad to see that we're going to have a, 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 an open minded questioning and, and, and looking out for the Airway Heights community.
Yeah.
And Art's not there, but I, we really will miss Art. He was always there to make sure that nothing fell through the crack. So I hope both of you can help us with that and, and always keep the safety of the Airway Heights community first.
Yeah.
If anybody else want to say anything, the new commissioners, you're more than welcome to say something.
Well, Cal, I'd like to jump in as well and just say, welcome Hank and Angelina. I look forward to working with both of you and furthering Airway Heights. It's, uh, it's been a pleasure being on this commission. I think it's, I've been on for around eighteen months. And I've seen so much change since I've been on with Heather and Zach being added as well to the city staff. And we've been making a lot of progress over the past year. I look forward to continuing that with you two as well.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mark. Way to step up to the plate and volunteer for that vice chair position.
Thank you, Hank.
And I do feel this is work. When Zach sent all those files, I was like, oh my God. And trying to read through all that stuff today and I was making all these notes and I'm like, oh my God. Trying to scrambling to get ready for today. But I, I, I really appreciate all the information that Zach and the mapping. I, I worked with Zach at Eastern and he's awesome. And I, I'm really impressed with the, the map you showed us last time too, how you can just click on something and see where that manhole is or wire hole is and who it belongs to. It's just, it's amazing. I just remember driving through Airway Heights when I used to live on the rez, going into the city. We were little kids and it just seemed so deserty out here and probably nothing. Now look at it, you know, and I've lived out here going on almost seven years and it has grown so fast. I can't even believe it. I, I almost am calling it the little Reno, you know, area, the way this is going. And I am just happy to be part of the planning commission. I'm excited. And I really do care about this area. I've got kids here and family here and it really matters, so.
Heather, how come there aren't any trees here?
Well, that's part of our need to update our landscape code, which we're going to do in two thousand and twenty two. We, we do require trees and residential subdivision, but we need to update the code so that it would be installed. Now, we are going to have a great big tree project when the sixteenth, twelfth avenue project comes in because that's going to be a boulevard.
There's also geology that, that plays into that a little bit.
A little bit salt here and there.
Shallow salt bedrock.
We gotta plant those indigenous trees that can survive here.
ponderosa pines, man, let's go.
Hey Zachary, you're not going to allow all these five G towers to go up in Airway Heights, are you?
I don't know how much.
And that is the correct answer, Cal. Whatever you're going to say is the correct answer.
I just wanted to say that tonight's format was excellent. Putting up the information in front of us. Cause you know, sometimes playing and trying to look for things and trying to see everything. Like I personally, I found it very, very good. So I hope we can keep doing that.
Absolutely.
Excellent, you know, I don't have to print anything. It's right there. So really appreciate that. And Zach's bringing technology to Airway Heights, which is good.
We'll be doing that for all the meetings moving forward. We'll bring up the texts and the maps and documents so that it makes it accessible. Cause it's the real difference between having a Zoom meeting and being in person is normally, you know, plenty of departments would print out reams of paper of copies of drafts and maps. And people could pick it up if they wanted to when they sat in the room. Being this way will, will be able to electronically and then we're going to be working on loading the packet so that there's a way for people to get the packet as well. We already sent it out to, gosh, I don't know, thirty agencies the same time we send it out to you. So other committees know what we're doing, but we need to make it a little bit more publicly accessible. So that's, that's the next generation that you'll see this every time from now on.
I just wanted to say something that my experience being on the planning commissioner, I've seen that when we have the live meetings, we don't get a good participation of people. It's usually the commissioners and the staff. And then once in a while, we might see somebody. But I think if it's possible in the live meetings, if we can have this kind of forum available, maybe my, people might take more interest in joining the meetings instead of coming there. So just a suggestion if going forward, if we can somehow incorporate this to the live meetings.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Cal.
Sometimes I see seventeen people on here, which I've never seen in the last four years. So I, I, I would suggest that if we can do something like that, it would be great.
That's a great suggestion. And I, I do have a feeling that that will be something that, you know, we talk about change as a result of the world by pandemic. I think that how we engage has, has been permanently modified by the technology and we certainly have the ability to continue to do this. So we'll, we'll certainly take that suggestion and move forward with recommendation to the administration for that.
If I may, Cal, do you think that this whole Zoom platform, I mean, I get it with this pandemic like Heather mentioned, but you think that this Zoom forum is intimidating to most people? You know, if they could come to a building, you know, minus the COVID issue, they would probably come right more in attendance. Did, did you guys have a pretty good attendance in person?
We don't.
No.
With you. I've been on the commission probably four years now. And like I said, I have never seen more than one person show up.
Really?
Yeah, but here I've been watching this and in the last year, I've seen seventeen, sixteen, fifteen. And there are people on the, on the Zoom that normally would not show up or drive here. But because of the convenience of working from home at this hour or whatever, I've seen a change. I've seen a difference and I, I really, last week I was thinking about it that how, how this has become a good tool, but I don't want to lose the tool going forward.
Yeah.
You better grab ten friends and family and sit in the room with you too.
It helps, you know, I mean, it's even like the commissioners, you know, ourselves. If we can all come to a meeting and maybe we can join in this way, that's a plus.
Yeah, there's just more options to engage. And I know that some people are intimidating just to go to the public, the public space to engage. So how giving them that access without actually being present, I am with you, Cal. There's more engagement.
Okay, no more comments. I'd like to move to staff reports. I'll hand it over to Heather or Zach.
Zach, do you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. Um, so I said a couple of things. One, just to reiterate everything that Cal said regarding Hank and Angelina. We're very excited to have you guys on the commission. Tonight was a rough one. It was a pretty intense meeting. So welcome. But in general, you know, you guys did great. We're really happy to have you. So welcome. Secondly, I just want to congratulate Mark. Jokes aside, very well deserved. So congratulations.
Thank you, Zach.
Sure. And then, and then the last two things. One, the GIS program will hopefully be up by the next time we speak. It'll be live. We're, we're shooting for the end of March. And so, yeah, the last piece, we're waiting on that is for the zoning map to pass so we can have the zoning map. yeah, the last piece, we're waiting on that is for the zoning map to pass so we can have the zoning map available online. Um, so that's coming up. Uh, you guys, you know, took a look at it a couple of months ago, gave some really good feedback. Appreciate that. So we're hoping to take a big step forward with that pretty soon here. Uh, secondly, um, we're looking to open up an application process for position number two, uh, which was just vacated by, uh, Sean Fell. Um, so if you have anyone in mind, just let us know and we can reach out to them. But, uh, we're going to be doing that. You know, some public outreach and seeing if we can get our, our, our last seat filled and have a full commission.
Is that the one residential?
There's a lot. What? Cal, I heard you first. Uh, that does require residency. Yes.
I have an application I need to turn in to you and they are a resident of the city.
Perfect. Perfect. Um, well, let's, uh, we could figure that out. I'll shoot you an email tomorrow and we can figure out how to get that.
Perfect. And maybe we can sit down and talk about those, uh, those, uh, discussion points from earlier about the different, uh, requirements.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely. And, uh, Heather, if you have anything.
Oh, great. Thank you. Uh, yeah, congratulations. Absolutely. Hank and Angelina, we're so happy to have you on the commission. You bring a wealth of experience. Really excited for your perspective as we move through what is going to be a major project. We'll talk about this at the next meeting, which is a twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan. This was uh, always the idea. We were going to do a compliance plan and then launch into a new visioning, especially because of the amount of growth that's occurring in the city. And, uh, we very much, um, need your support and help in that process. So just a reminder that we are, uh, putting together the RFP committee. Angelina, uh, was selected by random computer. Uh, Zach has a computer program that does things randomly uh, to be on the committee. Uh, so our goal is to meet next week to go through the RFPs for selecting a consultant. We'll be able to provide an update in April of who was selected and, uh, provide more in-depth detail about the timeline uh, for that comprehensive plan work and as well as the other parties that will be involved. Um, great job tonight. This was really a lot. You got through six hearing items. Um, we're just barely past eight thirty. That's huge. You guys were very efficient. You're doing a great job. It's a, it's a lot of work and a lot of materials. Um, and because of that, uh, because we're moving over the commercial zones, we're going to lighten the load next month. So you guys don't have to, to be here so long. I, I do apologize, um, for putting so much into this. We've, we've been really pushing for a long time, actually since I started uh, fifteen months ago to get into full GMA compliance. And this is the, this is the last, um, pieces that we needed in order to do that. And then we had a grant deadline that we have to meet and moving forward with the downtown. So I apologize for putting so much on your agenda. But you did great. Moving through all that material. Um, so with that, I'm going to probably push off the public art funding ordinance uh, for at least another month to get fully through the comprehensive plan program that will take us through next year and the commercial zones, because I suspect we'll probably spend at least an hour at the next meeting, uh, going through that use table so that we can get that finalized and uh, hopefully everyone will feel comfortable with those uses. But uh, with that, um, the city's growing. Um, just a reminder, uh, for Cal and Mark, and, and this is new information for Hank and Angelina. If you'd like to know any of the new permits that are underway, you go to the city of Airway Heights and go to the building department, their webpage, and in the middle of the page is a portal to our permit system called Permit Trax. You can click on that and a map will appear and all those dots represent all of the existing building permits that are active. You can hover over a dot or click on it and it will give you more detailed information on the permit and the type of permit that it is. So it's a great way to keep up on activity that's going on. Um, and with that, we're getting a lot of single family building permits coming in. Zach is spending really a lot of time doing those permits pretty much as soon as lots are finalized through subdivision, they're being sold and built on. So just a ton of, of single family. We do have uh, commercial projects that are underway, some pretty substantial ones that you see as you go further to the east meeting with the city of Airway Heights. Commercial development. So it really looks visually like Airway Heights is extending toward I ninety because of all of that development that's occurring out there. Uh, there's major expansions happening at both of the tribes. Those will not appear in our permit system because they're sovereign nations. So they're not required to get a building permit from the city, but just uh, be aware that those projects are occurring, which is the hotel expansion over at the Callow Spell, as well as the Copper River Run has a second phase of development and the Spokane tribe is expanding their casino as well. So you'll be seeing as you go through the committee construction equipment on site for those projects moving forward. So a lot going on, will continue to go on. And then I just want to put a final plug that the Parks Department is doing a master plan update this year that will be tied into the comp plan. So it's a great time to get engaged in the park plan as it's moving forward. They do a master plan, I think every two years. And, uh, just a reminder that the rec center is reopened. So if you have, have not joined, please consider doing so. It's, it's a community asset. Uh, but it does require membership to help, uh, drive that facility forward and help, um, keep it going. So with that, I'm just going to conclude by saying thank you so much. I'm, I'm very much, uh, appreciate all of your volunteering time because I know that we're stealing away from family dinners. We're stealing away from other activities that you may do. Um, it could be a lot more fun than this. So thank you very much.
Sleeping on the couch, I guess, right?
Yeah.
If I could, real quick, before we adjourn the meeting this evening, not to get ahead of Cal, but I, I just wanted to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to serve on the committee and I know the council, you know, appointed, uh, Angelina and myself, and I'm grateful to them for giving me the chance. Um, I'll try not to be too much of a pain in the backside. And if I can contribute something, I, I hope I can. Um, I withdrew my name the first time around because I thought the committee's got to be crazy not to pick up Angelina. Experience, you know? But, but it seems like I've landed here, uh, after all, and I, I just wanted to thank you for the great job you did this evening, Heather. And also, uh, Zachary really isn't just another pretty face, is he? He's really good at what he does. So thank you very much, Zachary, too, for your emails and your, you know, warm welcome. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to serve on the committee. So thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to say anything before I let you guys go?
Congratulations to Mark. I think we need to give him his own gavel.
You might give me a big head with that, Heather. I think I'm okay.
All right. If there's no further comments, we're going to adjourn at, uh, eight thirty-nine and thank you everybody for your time tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good night, Zach. Have a good night, Heather. Have a good night, Hank.
Bye.